That's gonna fall back on several.
It will be meaningful.
We have checked it once and then went back both times. That's where we stopped. That's on the county's art list what we get paid to maintain. That's where it stops.
Even though we don't maintain?
Yep, that's where we stop at.
Yep. After that, it's a, what they call it, a community road? Or private, probably a driveway.
Yeah, there may be an easement group, but I mean, the county doesn't decide.
Well, either way, he can't, the road can't be blocked from access to that tour camper. So they wanted, if anybody wanted to play games, they can't drop something to keep from people from going to.
Long as, long as there's an easement, that's still accounting, that's still the county road. Yeah, as long as there's an easement place.
No, it's a.
They're not landlocked.
Well, they would be landlocked.
If they block them, yeah.
Fair enough.
There you go.
But a total of twelve thousand is to be paid, Tom?
There was one, this is the second.
So they're, okay, so they make one total.
Yeah.
And you wanted to sign this, I'll write a check for it too.
Oh, he's already. Alright, this time the regular county commission being comes to order. Certified, disengaged in approval minutes, payment of bills and proof payroll.
On my second.
All in favor. Dixon. Dispatch.
It starts raining.
Oh. You got your contract.
I left it up here.
Nothing written in on it.
There's a one page.
One page, he's got one.
Yeah, we got, we got. So what day you want to make it effective?
Might as well start on the, uh, May first, might as well start on May first, just to make it simple.
Okay.
That's not gonna put your dispatch at.
No.
Put it under stress on them and they're not gonna be able to cover everything.
No.
Everyone hasn't signed Andy or. May the first.
Yeah. In a one-year term, May first to May first?
Yes.
I'm gonna screw this one. This is made, oh, they're gonna enter on May first, okay.
Yeah.
Just be prepared, we wouldn't be getting on the first, same number down here.
Did Jeff sign those contracts for?
I got it.
That's fine, Tyler?
Yeah, I'll take it up there.
And Dixon's, Dixon's to make their payment before the first day of May?
Yes.
I need to sign this one, see.
I think go ahead.
Indeed, yeah, agreement between sheriff's office to provide dispatching for city of Dixon.
What line on the road does that go into for us?
Your dispatchers are paid out of general revenues, so it'll go into general revenue, no funds set aside for dispatch.
You're gonna be aligned, mate?
Yep.
Isn't that just nights and weekends or something like that?
Yeah.
You have something, sir?
Yeah, Jack's got something for us. He's got the, uh, he lives on Ray Hill Ranch.
Okay.
And so he's got some comments to say about that. Come on up, Jack.
I need you, we can see Dixon to sign those, bring me back. They may need to do it.
So you guys know the situation with the road.
What, what road is?
It's, it's Ranch Lane was the original name. It's Ranch Drive to the Commission. It's Ray Hill to the nine eleven department.
Give me your, your name.
Jacky Lane.
Thank you.
Yep. But my issue with it is, of course, there's a county ordinance that says it should be Ranch Drive. And I understand what you guys are going through with nine eleven and all that. But my, my deal is, I get mail from Rayville. Rayville has got mail from me. Uh, my wife has a metal cook condition. She has congestive heart failure and rheumatoid arthritis. She gets Pamera shots once a month. And the two thousand dollars a shot, we get four. It's eight thousand bucks a month. They were lost in the mail. So she didn't get a shot for a month. It sent her back for two months because she couldn't get a shot. So now we're picking them up at the pharmacy, but, um, she, when she had her problem with her heart, she filed for disability. She's worked her whole life. Um, never got paperwork back from disability. We're like, what's going on? Finally, our lawyer called. And said, why didn't you send the papers back in? We never got them. They were lost in the mail. Um, I've contacted Ashley Reynolds at KY three. She's been documenting things and I've contacted Brad York to help. Uh, so there's documentation on everything. Uh, and this is, this is my scariest part of the whole deal. Jimmy Bench, I talked with him before he left. He said, what's scary about it, Jack, is if you have an emergency, they're not gonna find your house. Because the, the, Rayville and Ray Hill are a mile apart, Andy? Two miles apart?
About a mile and a half.
And here's the deal, she's got congestive heart failure. She could have a, a major problem at any time. And if that ambulance is a minute late, she dies. With the county ordinance being on the paper, who's to blame for that?
The state statute states, am I right, that the county names are.
Contract with nine one one says it too.
And the contract with nine one one also says it too. So if they change it, it's on them.
You see, and the reason why, uh, you know, Jack, I, you know, you and I have had conversations about this and, uh, I mean, I was in on the telephone call with the lawyer from nine one one. I mean, and he even admitted, you know, that county commission names the roads.
Right.
You know, uh, as a matter of fact, we've done two ordinances. We did an ordinance early. We even signed their paperwork saying we didn't agree with Ray Hill. Uh, I mean, we're sitting here in an open meeting and the sheriff's sitting here and the time Sean us from emergency management, we're saying Ray Hill and they said, wait a minute, that's not safe. Ray Bill's just down the road.
Right.
So we signed their nine one one paperwork saying we don't agree with this, sent it back. And it wasn't, I don't know, it, I don't know the exact dates, but it wasn't very much longer after that. We get a letter from them saying this wasn't a request. Get out there and put a sign up.
Huh.
Yeah, and that's basically what the letter was. We were just, we were just telling you guys it was gonna be Ray Hill. We don't need your opinion. Get out there and put a sign up.
Right.
And so that's whenever Kevin Hillman got involved, we did an ordinance, sent them an ordinance, they didn't, they didn't care. And so, you know, we still think it's unsafe to have two names that close together.
Right.
And so that's why we, then we did this agreement with them, where they finally agreed through their attorney and they all signed off on it. Nine one one signed off on it. They all signed off on it that the county commission can name the road. So that's the ordinance you paced it, you posted on Facebook.
Right.
That actually showed that.
Yep.
We passed that. We wanted it named, right? You know, it, it could be anything other than right here. We even gave them the opportunity to come up with something else. You know, uh, but so, you know, we have other places where it's Reading Lane, Reading Drive, other places that are close. So that's why we did Ranch Lane, Ranch Drive. You know, it's close. Uh, sent that ordinance. I talked to board members. I said, look, we don't think this is safe. Let's just change it. Let's go on. No. And so that's the situation where we're at. You know, we even voted in a session to sue nine one one.
Yeah.
But that's, you know, and Jeff came in later, so you know, uh, but, you know, I think we're, you know, the commission's at, I mean, we've done everything we can do other than just, and you don't wanna be suing, you know, intergovernmental agencies shouldn't be suing each other. You should be trying to work together.
Right.
But it don't seem like they wanna work with us, you know, there is no. Yeah, you know, and like I said, if, if you don't like ranch, pick something else.
Right.
You know?
Wouldn't matter.
It just has to be an R or it has to be something that's, you know, not similar to something else, you know, but no.
But sign is up there now.
Ranch sign is up there.
Ranch Drive.
So I, when you, it's the end of my road, they'll call. We can't find your address. Because nine one one, that, where this all.
They're gonna change it in their system.
Yeah, well, yeah, nine one one, where this, where this all started, if you go down ranch and it takes a curve.
Ranch Lane.
It takes, yeah, go down Ranch Lane, it takes a curve. Well, there's, there used to be a powder coating, powder coating business there on the corner. Well, there's a lady that's bought that and she's trying to turn it into a assisted living type place where, and so it's added addresses to that road. And so once you get so many addresses to that road, it needs a new road name. And so then they, that's whenever they named it Ray Hill.
My, my house is right here. Ranch Drive turns right here and goes, well, commission's Ranch Drive, turns right here and goes back this way.
No, this is. Yeah, yeah. And so even, even knowing our concerns and everything, nine one one went ahead and just changed the name to, to Ray Hill. And then now they're refusing to cooperate with the ordinance that was passed by the commission. And their agreement with the commission, they're refusing to change the name to ranch. So that's, that's where, that's where we're at.
Statute's been in place for many years. Prior to nine one one, moving up on the hill.
When's the nine one one election? Board election?
You got a point.
When? Next November.
So is the ordinance not a law? Brad York looked at it and said, well, that's common sense.
Ordinance is law.
So how come we can't, the prosecutor has to do his job and enforce that law? Or a judge has to look at that and say, this is the law, we have to pass it. What's, what's the holdup? I don't get it.
Well, enforcement comes in one of two ways. It's not criminal for them not, not a criminal law where I can go up in jail or sheriff go arresting for it. We can sue them for specific performance under our contract and declare it for a judgment, but I mean, what's the holdup? We can go ahead and file that, which I voted to do. And I had asked that when I came down, I think my first month down here, I said, well, I know you guys had this vote for some reason in open sessions, sue these, sounds like a closed session legal matter for me. Since you've already been there and have it on your record, um, that lawsuit, unless they just hold over six, nine, twelve months. So, I mean, I asked, I said, what's, same question, Sheriff did, what's the sign out there now? And because it said, whatever y'all voted for, I said, well, so what's the issue right now? And you reaching out to me and having this discussion in the morning is the first I heard that it's still an issue because I assume with the right roadside out there, they're not down, they're trying to tear it down like way beyond their authority to soaring county property, which would be a crime, sheriff to do something about it, move that.
It's happened once. It's happened one time.
Are, are you saying nine one one took it down? That was important.
No, sign. We didn't say nine one one.
That's why I asked.
We said the sign was taken down once. We didn't say who.
Thank you. That's why I asked.
Can I say it?
You can say it.
Nine one one took it down.
Okay.
I didn't see it. That's the reason I can't say that. I didn't physically see it.
So you know, with me, it's not just the road name. Um, it's the safety of my wife.
Correct.
Yeah, that's pretty serious stuff.
Yeah, it is.
And, and this lady that runs nine one one, she's buddies with Doyle Ray, that named it Rayville, which if you look him up, he's a druggie. So she's. Well, not, not only, not only with you, but if, if.
I'll tell you.
But if this, but if this lady from, but if this lady from, but if this lady from Lebman, it's six assisted living people on that road too.
Right.
I mean, I don't want anybody to get an ambulance call, but the chances are, there's more chances, there's gonna be an ambulance call to that.
Any emergency call, seconds, seconds are gone.
And if they're, and if they're down there on Rayville and not on Ray Hill already.
And we explained this from the very beginning to them. The confusion it was creating.
Yeah.
And that's why we stuck to our guns and kept it what it was.
Yeah.
Because we didn't want this to happen.
Right.
I ain't gonna lie, because when, when the deputies are out there, they're, they're not pulling over the side of the road to write this information down. They're here, they're here and right. And it, I mean, depending on what the deputy hears, right, a three thirty. And it, I mean, depending on what the deputy hears, right, yeah, a three thirty, this is.
And they're both on one thirty three is the pro, and they're both, they're both close enough together. You know, that they're going to the same.
A lot of that, they're familiar with, with a lot of the roads, but I mean, some roads they know better and they hear Ray Hill and it's, or Rayville and it's muffled or, you know, whatever.
It, it's close, but it could have them here when they need to be there.
Yeah. That two or three minutes could be a life.
And you're going two miles past and coming two miles back. A lot of time wasted.
Doesn't nine one one, the ones who report everything to USPS and the DCS and the cops and everybody?
Yes. So, so do I have any, is there anything I can do to help? I mean, I called the prosecutor this week and talked with his secretary and she was in awe that it hadn't been fixed. You know, she's like, well, I thought that was fixed.
Well, I think you heard from Jeff thinking, and he thought it would be fixed too with everything that was done. So. I, I mean, I think we'll follow his advice to go into a closed session here, here in a little bit and, and discuss it where it needs to be and.
I appreciate you guys' time.
I mean, I, I, I know what our decision's going to be, you know, but I think.
I have a, I have a, well, solution for later down the line.
Okay.
But that's why I asked you to come in, Jack.
Yeah.
To hear from, to hear from everybody involved, you know, uh, that.
We've been fighting for you for a while, since the beginning.
Yeah.
I think, I think it all started in March of last year. You said July, but I was thinking March is whenever we signed the little thing back and sent it back to nine one one.
July is when they sent me my neighbors to paper saying they were changing the road. So it didn't, yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was a little earlier than that.
July of twenty three.
Yeah.
Is one.
Yeah, no, I, I think shortly after that, I don't know, David, if we look back through the records, I think we did an ordinance at some point.
I'm serious.
Early on.
I've dealt with them, well, fifteen years I've been here.
Yeah.
And it's their way or no way. That's the way it's put out. It's their way or no way.
Right.
Even though the state has it written as a law. Still their way or no way.
Who pays, who pays their debt on, uh, South? They, they, they're, for the, there's, it's, it's our way, which is kind of crazy how they can get, get by with not doing what the people need them to do and what the people want them to do. It's not.
It's not about the people, it's about one person.
Well, I, I got that, but, uh, that, well.
Right.
I think their budget's somewhere around one point six million dollars of, of tax money.
That's the scary part. You're right.
Yeah.
That's why the sheriff's office should be running that place. Just my one cent.
Well, we'll, we'll have a closed session, Jack, and we'll make a decision. I appreciate you coming in.
Yeah, I appreciate it, guys.
We already know what our decision is.
But we, like I said, we've, you know, I worked for, the general office for thirty years. And I had meetings with all kinds of organizations throughout the state.
Yeah.
And you, you went into a meeting hoping to work things out. There, there was some give and take and I've never worked with an organization that there is no give and take.
Right.
Zero.
Uh, it's just, it, it has me baffled.
It moved me also. All right, guys, I appreciate the time. Hey, guys, have a blessed day.
You too.
Think about it.
Deal with it for over fifteen years.
Time's up.
I'd like to get a copy of their budget.
Yeah, do a sunshine request.
Just go up and give my sunshine request.
Do they have, do they, are they required to have open meetings, open board meetings?
Nine one, yes.
Do you get notice of them, Daryl?
If you want to call it notice, um, I'm, I'm going to be straight with you and this is something that I've said.
You're live, you're on record.
I can play nice or I can be honest. You would not get away with sending out an agenda on the afternoon of the previous month's meeting that says the agenda is basically director report, new business with nothing listed, old business with nothing listed, and then allows for a closed session with no identification of what it's for. That's what they do. Their agenda is sent out on the afternoon of their meeting for the following month and contains nothing about what actually is going to be discussed. I've chosen not to push the issue too terribly hard, largely because nobody's been complaining. It sounds to me like there's a complaint. But if you want to get in their agenda list, you'll get the agenda, you'll find out the date and time of your meeting, you won't have any idea what they're going to be talking about.
Do they broadcast?
I, I'm sorry?
Do they broadcast?
Uh, broadcast?
No.
Nobody does.
No.
Uh, I'll, you, if you do that, you're taking on Ty Smith and you probably don't want it.
You're fine. Go ahead and take it on.
There's a lot that.
You can do it.
You don't want that fight. Ty says really strong opinions against.
I think.
You can't stop it.
I said, there's a lot I can do to restrict it.
Not an open meeting.
I, I know the rules.
Not an open meeting.
Here's what, what this is a taxpayer-funded organization. I'm not defending the nine one one board. The law, the law gives governmental agencies the right to restrict auxiliary lighting, the right to prevent you from having tapes on your table, the right to tell you the camera has to be at locations that are non-disruptive. Uh, your former county treasurer here, Sue Rohn, when a previous person tried to do what you did, came in and made some very, very, very strong statements that I chose not to do anything with, but legally Sue was absolutely right. Sue's position, and you remember that, Jean, you were here. Sue's position was that he should be told that he has to sit in the audience, sit in the back, and if people stand in front of him, that's nobody's fault, nobody's problem. There are things you can do significantly restricting TV and radio broadcasts you can't do to print. I'm not saying that's good. I'm saying that's what the law says. Taking on Ty, so find a way to use the law and make things.
Honesty opens the best way.
I'm not, you haven't heard me complain about what he's doing. I'm encouraging you. You didn't hear me complain about the previous person did. I encouraged you. But I know you take on Ty, you're asking for a fight you don't want. You, you do it your, you do it your.
It's always next election. Problem is something happens between them.
That's the problem. This gentleman right here, something's going to happen before then. It says wipe at risk.
Right, it's a very good point.
That's nice.
Well, I guess we got a lawyer running the county.
No. I've been sitting him out once. He was with the health department for a long time. Anyway.
Back to the nineteen sixties or seventies around here, huh?
Well, if you really want to talk about sixties, seventies, ask why the nine one one board exists, why the service department does control it. One of your predecessors is responsible for the situation that the county's dealing with now. And I'm not saying that's good or bad, but there's reasons the nine one one board existed to clean up a problem and now an argument to be made that the solution created a new problem. The last time two county entities ceded each other was also over nine one one service.
Yep. There's one of the heartaches right there. That was a player for sure. Forty thousand dollar mistake.
Jean, a question you haven't asked that's going to come up later, the nine one one board used to meet on Fridays. They changed their meeting to conflict with the county commission. Normally meet on the second Thursday or every month. I'm not telling you they changed their meeting to conflict with the county commission so I wouldn't attend, but that's a pretty good guess.
What time?
Uh, eight thirty AM. Unless the change, it pushes that. Uh, theoretically, that's probably.
No, they sent the meeting out a month in advance with nothing on it.
It, it's agenda that consists of director's report, new business unspecified, old business unspecified. And they send it on the afternoon of the previous month's meeting.
One of these guys, he goes, our meeting.
They're just going to report it back to nine one.
Why do you need to go to that meeting again?
I can't go. I might get a tomato.
You're like me. You're just voiceful. You don't care about a camera. You just tell it the way you feel.
I ain't throwing him under the bus.
He's using diplomacy, right?
Yeah. Thank you.
Hey, we call it the way we see it. That's the way it's supposed to be. Should quiet.
I'll wake him up.
Dave's deep over there.
He's, he's deep in the reading.
Me? No, Dave.
Well, if we're done with that old nine one one thing, I just got some general questions that I, our app, uh, is looking very good. Uh, we've had all the emails or everything that happens in the app, we're going to forward to Dave. Uh, so Dave can then forward them to us. No, uh, the emergency.
Okay.
I'm just playing. For the emergency app, we have a, a form, we're going to have a form in there where people can fill out if there's damage after storms or anything like that. Right now, we'll, we flow it through Hector as the emergency manager, so he can track that. Uh, do you also want to be on that to? It, it won't be separated east or west. Uh, but still, just so you're.
Can report a tree on the road.
Tree in a row, yeah. It, 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 doesn't, doesn't necessarily have to be for storm or anything, but.
Emailers and texts.
It's going to be an email.
Yeah, we need to be.
And if I can get your emails.
We'll just, you do the, uh, Pulaski County, Pulaski County, RB, Road and Bridge.
Yeah, okay, for, okay, so you both.
Yeah, it's on Gmail, so.
Okay.
Does it have a GIS interface where it's like map, show you where?
It's, uh, on that portion.
Well, I mean, they just list the road.
They're, they can list the road, they can add pictures, they can take pictures and add it.
I figured, let you know how you can plug in the, you know, Google Maps. Your phone will automatically do that. If you add in the address, phone will automatically.
Yeah, because when people tell me, oh, I just click on it, it takes me right to you.
Yeah. I should have mapped you guys in the office.
See, they'll pick road, they'll pick one of the three options. And then, uh, we, and I can add more if, if, because the power outages will have to go to Gascasage and La Cleet. But it'll automatically filter all that, so you're not getting, you're just getting what pertains to the, the damage. But it gives the address, the name, I mean, those are all required, uh, placeholder, so, and it can add an image and then submit. So it's going to be a pretty, pretty good, uh, pretty good tool. Have all the schools listed with, uh, the SROs, and they can submit a tip through that, add app as well to the, directly to the SRO.
And, uh, Hector added a note on the bottom, it was notifications to invite people to use your app and notify you of any damage. We have notifications on the high floor where they put it on there.
I don't know what he can do with that.
Monday was here, wife went to the doctor.
Yeah, it's, uh, he can add. On the bottom down there, he can add. Once everything's rolling, we'll put out a publication. Uh, actually, the sheriff put out part of it, uh, and then it'll have a QR code next to it.
That's the. Flip the disc in there, it's not them trying to get you up and down.
Do you need to, do you need to get back upstairs?
Just go ahead and do it. No, just go ahead and do it.
Do you do anything, Daniel?
The storm is.
Floods is what we're going to get. Seven to ten inches of rain down south.
They lowered the mountain down south, thank God. It was up to almost fourteen inches, but now they've lowered it to seven.
We're supposed to get two to three here.
They lowered everything.
So depending on what down south.
Yeah, that's the key.
If it goes on past Houston, we'll be okay, but if it, it's in Seymour, Houston, Hartville, down in there, then Gascade will get back up, the Pioneer will get back up and Ruby do back up and.
So you need a close.
FEMA's going to lap over in the canyon. We haven't even, we haven't even got FEMA paperwork done from the last flood.
Right.
Yes.
Do you need to?
All right, this mean being, this means being close, Missouri law, Missouri law, chapter six, ten, zero, two, one. To include two legal.
I'll move, I'll flag it.
All in favor?
All right. Get out.
I'm gonna look something up. I was gonna look something up.
About all the known business that happened today?
Yes.
That's about it.